All right, I'll call it to order this July 10th, 2025's Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Special Meeting. Our only item is our planning discussion for our P O C D, which I think should be, we'll see where we are, but should be our last, because we have our public hearing scheduled for September 8th or 9th. I forget which one. And as we discussed earlier this spring, the plan was to have a draft that we can at least be ready to move forward on that hearing date for the public, give them sufficient time to review. Um, so this hopefully will be the last one for that. Obviously during the, obviously during our public hearing and during executive session, we can discuss anything else that we've either previously discussed or something that's come up or whatever the case may be. But in order to get our draft ready and give the public sufficient time to review it for our September meeting, I am expecting this to probably be our last, but we shall see where we are. So last we left off, we had some additional recommendation edits or additions from a few, a few stakeholders, man, harbor management was one at least, I think. Ms. Harrigan in noting what the Board of Ed has been saying recently, had a suggestion on some others. And they may have, I think there were some suggestions as well from them from their letter. Um, so I, why don't we go through them first? Because I think that was, we finished our third review of the P O, the recommendations. We need to go through those, I think. I have Commissioner Braun on twice. Do you, are you?
I'm just having trouble with everything.
No, that's fine. Okay. Seeing double, but that's fine. Um. So Ms. Harrigan, are you able to kind of just show us, identify to us at least kind of where the, uh, if there's been any requested edits for those recommendations from harbor management and Board of Ed or anywhere else, uh, so we can kind of just go through those?
Sure, we can, uh, we can go through that. Can everyone hear me okay?
Are we able to share your screen?
Um, sure. Let me get that up. Thank you.
Or is it, is it helpful for us to use the attachments that you sent or what's the best?
Yeah, let me see. Uh, I'm just gonna see if I can share this. Actually, let me just close some other things. Can you see, can you see that, uh, the blue pages?
Yeah, if we can just, um, make it one page instead of the two and then just zoom in a bit, that would be great.
Okay, perfect. Let me just, I'll shut down some other stuff. Hold on.
For those who are blind like me, Tommy, you can make it larger on your computer.
Okay, let me just, sorry.
Not me. That's not my.
I have way too much stuff open here.
That's fine.
Okay, so if I just, um, I think I can view single page. Well, all right, let me just see if I can do it this way.
View and then where's single page? That's fine. However, you just, yeah, however you need to do just to get the, it up a bit more. Yeah. Make that a little wider and I think we're good. Perfect.
Okay.
I can see this. Is everybody else okay?
Good here. Yep. Though, though that zoom feature, uh, Commissioner Harrison mentioned is helpful.
Okay, did, is, is that big enough? Okay, perfect.
It is for me. Does anybody else need a little bit more?
Uh, I think what I was talking about, uh, that Commissioner Harrison mentioned, there's, everybody should have their own individual zoom.
Yeah, you can enlarge it on your screen if you need to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The shared panel.
How do we do that?
It should be right above the, the panel that we're looking at.
If you have a touchscreen, you can do it with your hands.
Yeah, so it says 100% hit the viewer.
Yeah.
Uh, then there's a plus to the right of it, so you can zoom in that way.
I'll make it a little bigger this way, too.
That's good. That's good right there.
Okay, so let me go ahead and start. So based on the conversation that we had had, uh, we reordered the plan goals in order and flow of the subsequent blue pages. So, um, those got, they didn't change, but they got moved around. Uh, were reordered. I should, I should clarify. One of the comments that was made, this is item number, now ordered item number seven. We added educational facilities within that particular plan goal. Um, but for the most part, I think the plan goals, um, were generally intended to remain the same based on our prior conversations. Um, if we go to, um, a community that is home to all recommendations, it was requested by the commission that we put, um, subheaders within each of the plan goal sections that highlights what the, what that section is about more specifically. So we put, um, underneath this, header policies to support housing diversity and housing choice in Fairfield. Um, some of the other, um, changes, I think most of that section, uh, Commissioner Braun can probably speak to. She sent some additional requested changes that were, had not previously been discussed by the commission. Um, if I could just go through the changes that I had made since the prior discussion on this one, and then we can get to, um, her conversation, um, and requests, um, following that, that would be great. Um, so largely, I think we had, um, added some, to number three, we had added, um, some language that would allow for the Center Design Business District, um, either maintaining that district and expanding it in other portions, either west and also potentially east. I think the idea in the conversation was that it didn't necessarily need to be the Center Design Business District. Uh, when you get to that portion of the zoning regulation changes, you may discuss a different district, I think. Uh, for example, a gateway district was discussed, whether you want to add that as a potential, um, a potential zone, which would have, you know, slightly different standards. So that language was revised in number three. And then I'm just gonna keep scrolling down. And then under Strategy B, um, continue to support efforts to preserve and protect historic districts, including review of expansion of the existing historic districts and designation of additional individual properties of historic significance. So I think that would, I, I believe that there's an effort going on right now with the Historic District Commission, um, to review their guidelines and policies, but that can certainly be something that, uh, we can see whether there's funding to initiate additional historic surveys, um, uh, in the future. So hopefully that covers, I think, some of the concern about needing to look and see whether, um, since the last P O C D, there's additional properties, um, that we need to add.
Okay.
And then I'm just, to be honest, I'm just gonna scroll to, um, the red language, uh, which I think was part of what was requested to be changed based on the, the four meetings that were held to review the language.
So just to be clear, the red language is stuff that we've, you know, the inclusions of what we previously have discussed or anything else that, because I remember after our last meeting, I, I kind of set out a, okay, we've got some smaller, you know, second, I think, recommendation, suggestions from harbor management and things like that. Have those been put into this now and are redlined?
Some of them, yes. Some of it, those changes were requested in the actual, um, narrative portion. So those we don't have today.
Okay. Keep going then, please.
Okay. So within the design residence district, um, I'm gonna zoom out just a little bit. So under Strategy D, um, one of the requested changes was to seek to increase the affordable set aside requirements to 20%, but base that on potential incentives such as increased density in certain zoning districts. Uh, with increased density opportunity comes the expectation of an increased percentage of affordability. Um, that was a request, uh, made in conversation about this section. The other portion was within the design residence district. The revisions to that, um, there was a request that, um, we also look at potential open space provision as part of the D R D. And then as pertains to Strategy F with the, um, parking requirements, um, the revision that we require no more than two spaces per dwelling unit unless fewer spaces are permitted because of, um, already pre-existing zones such as the transit oriented development, um, overlay areas. Do we want to take a pause there? Mr. Chair?
Sure. Yeah, why don't we try and, instead of going backwards later, um, at least on the current red lines, current line lines, that what can, I know Commissioner Braun had, uh, some edits we can get to next. Anything with the current red lines?
Well, um, I had suggested an architectural design standards. Is that in here? Or was that added? Is it already in here? I know, I thought Jeff had one of it also.
I didn't add that to the section because it, you have to discuss it as a group before I can revise the language. So as that was not, that was not part of your prior discussion and, um, a consensus was not reached. I think you need to bring that up as a potential suggestion now.
So can I give you three potential suggestions? So that would be one.
Well, hold on, hold on. Let's start with the red lines that we've been, we just saw. Um, and we can get to, I know you had some others too, so we can go to yours next. Commissioner Harrison, you had something?
I just had a clarifying question. Um, in number one, under Strategy F, when we say two spaces per dwelling.
You were just there.
Are we, how are we, oh, what's that?
No, no.
Yeah, how are we, are we defining dwelling just as any dwelling or is it a single family home? Is it an apartment, a condo?
Any dwelling. So it could be a single family home. It could be, um, you know, unless it's otherwise defined in the regulations. So for example, when we, um, in our current accessory dwelling unit regulations, that only requires one additional off-site, uh, off-street parking space in addition to the spaces required as a single family residence. And right now, within our regulations, a single family residence is only required a minimum of two off-street parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I'm fine with the red lines. Anybody else have issues?
No issues here.
All right. So I think we're good there. Um.
Do you want me to stop sharing so you can discuss the other items and then I'll start sharing again?
That's fine, because Commissioner Braun, I think you're, the most recent edits I've seen from you are just with respect to this section, right?
Yes, so, um, the Gateway District, I don't think we ever really finished our discussion, but also is there something in here about doing a traffic and parking study before we talk about, you know, expanding the density?
I don't think that there is a requirement like that, that's anywhere in the, uh, P O C D. I think that's up to us to do if we're, if we want to do for adopting or considering regulations.
So my thoughts was it should be in the P O C D as something we should do before we consider adopting new regulations. Also, we passed a regulation, but it does not extend it all the way to Mill River. Does this pink map shows it going all the way down to Mill River? So that means whoever we're recommending for the center district, we're also recommending it be extended down to Mill River and Sasko Hill Road. Right now, the one we passed is only the current district, which goes to like, I don't know, just beyond Thorpe Street in one direction. It doesn't go anywhere on the other direction. So this pink map indicates that whatever our recommendations are for the Center Design Business District will go all the way to Sasko Hill Road, and then I guess South Benson on the other side. So I don't agree with that, but also I think before we do that, we have to have something in here to highlight the need to do a parking and traffic study first before we consider expanding it.
I mean, I think practically, if the commission wants to do that, we can do that, whether it's in the P O C D or not. Um, so I, I mean, I don't think that's what it's, for a visionary document like this to be, what, what are you gonna do for practical adoptions of, uh, regulations? I don't think we need to worry about that, but other thoughts?
I mean, we have studies throughout the P O C D, don't we? Mentions the studies. I don't see why this would be any different.
Yeah, we suggest having studies to be done, that's true, but not is a precondition to doing certain things, but like I said, it's up, what, what other thoughts are?
I, I'd say, um, I think there's another section where we talk about studying, uh, parking. I would rather see a, uh, either an adjustment to that, uh, or, or just some standalone. We should be studying parking as a town. I would not want to see making a parking study, uh, as, as the chair said, a precondition of another recommendation, but I do think it's worth having a recommendation in here as a town. We should be studying our parking needs.
I guess the question, can I ask a clarification question to Commissioner Corcello's point is, the, is the understanding, is the intention for the parking study or the traffic study to understand increases in volume based on changes that you're requesting? Because right now, um, you know, there's, we, we, we already allow commercial uses within that corridor. And we're actually, if, if you were to adopt the Center Design District requirements, either westward or eastward, it, it, there is, there is more likely, uh, not that much of a net change between the commercial environment that you already permit and then allowing for more of a mixed use environment because residential is a diffuse traffic generator. It's not a, uh, for example, in, in the Black Rock Turnpike area, when we had factories that employed 6,000 people, those people had to be there at exact times for the beginning of a shift and an end of a shift. Residential traffic generation is diffuse amongst a, a broader period of time because people work in different locations. So, um, the trips when they leave and the trips when they come back home is largely dependent upon a, a variety of different places that they have to take that trip to. And in today's working environment, sometimes they don't take that trip at all. So, um, for the, an existing commercial corridor, you already have baked in to our existing regulations and understanding that our existing zoning permits is going to generate a certain number of trips. Over time, as you have individual development projects, I think that's refined through the traffic studies that individual projects do. But this is already a commercial zone. We're not going from a non-commercial zone to a new commercial zone. This is a pre-existing commercial environment.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's where the existing parking recommendation in the P O C D lives. I think it's in the, um, a sustainable, a sustainably prosperous community, um, and in the context of the commercial corridors, we have a recommendation to conduct a parking study, um, which could include expanded shared parking opportunities, reduction in the amount of land dedicated to service parking, um, et cetera. So, I mean, I think if we wanted to, um, have a recommended, rather than creating a separate recommendation about parking, maybe we, if, if that needs to be adjusted, it could, but I think having a comprehensive look at parking makes sense. I think we have a recommendation in there, so it seems like that would be a good place to edit if, if needed.
Well, I think we should study parking totally, but I would like to study it holistically and not come to conclusions about it beforehand. And I'm just hearing conclusions before we even embark on that, such as suck up some of the recommendations that were made. Maybe I heard wrong, I don't know.
My concern is, uh, that, uh, the way it's worded, it almost seems like a precondition, uh, which might bind us in the future, and we may or may not have funds for a study. We may or may not at a later date decide that we need a study or, um, so, uh, to the extent there's that ambiguity, and I'd be concerned about having it in three and four there. I mean, it's fine to recommend a study, but to say consider after a study is almost a mandate, uh, which could tie our hands at a later date.
I mean, it doesn't.
Kathy, go ahead, sorry.
I was just saying, it doesn't have to be worded as a precondition, but I think if we're gonna put a recommendation in to expand the pink map, I really don't like because it shows we are intending, I think the pink map, what's the name of, uh, pink map should be eliminated. It, it shows that we intend to expand the, the newly densified downtown business district all the way to Sasko Hill Road, and it doesn't show the other direction, so it's already inaccurate from what we're recommending. It either should show both sides or none of it, because I don't think we should be making that recommendation without also having a recommendation to do a traffic study and a parking study, because things are different. I know we're used to have factories. That was then, this is now. You have a lot more development everywhere and a lot more traffic coming off the highway, a lot of everything. We've heard it from the neighbors and all these applications. Traffic is worse. Parking is difficult. So we need to undertake that, maybe not as a precondition, but I think that should be in this section, because this is the section where we're talking about adding more density all the way to Sasko Hill Road on one side and all the way to South Benson on the other side.
It's probably worth it. I mean, we're not, yeah, nothing is, we're not bound by anything in this document.
Um, yeah.
But I mean, it doesn't say. And we have discussed that in the past. I mean, the, the, the thing. You know, I think, uh, Commissioner, Ms. Harrigan is right. We don't think we, much sure we got to a point of uh, asking for consensus on it or not, but I mean, it is considered to expand it. Um, so I mean, I, and when we do that, the commission may, at that point, want to or not want to do a traffic, um, traffic and parking study. So I mean, I just, to me, it just seems like it's implicit in there. So.
This will, this will lead, this is one of the criteria for changing regulations, and we've already seen it happen with Circle Hotel and Fairfield Place applications where the applicants repeatedly quoted, you know, this new draft P O C D as justification for changing the regulations. So it is a criteria and it will be relied on. I think we should at least emphasize the need to do those studies. And I don't think it's emphasized if it's in another section.
Again, it says consider expanding, which is simply that, to consider it. It doesn't say we, we've made a decision. It doesn't say that we're gonna do it. Uh, it doesn't say that, you know, it's something for consideration, and when we consider it at that time, we may or may not feel that a study is necessary. Or we may consider and say, we don't want to do it, don't need to study.
I seem to recall our current regulations require a, a study, and I forget, this happened in Fairfield Place, where they were amending the regulation, but the regulation, uh, there was a reg, there were way, there was a way around it on that instance because they were doing something, they were amending a regulation, but I thought there was a requirement for a parking study that, uh, was, that was cited by the opposition on Fairfield Place, but it wasn't applicable there. Do you recall that, Ms. Harrigan?
I don't.
No, that's okay. And I think I might.
The Fairfield Place application did not have a holistic study. They had a study of their one little project.
I know.
That's my concern here.
I, I mean, I, listen, I think the, I think we can do it. Uh, I don't think having it in there or not in there. Um, I, I, I concern having it in there because more has more of a precondition aspect to it. I think when we're considering any regulations in our legislative capacity, uh, whether applicant brings it or we do it on our own, uh, we could be requiring those kind of studies. Um, so I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the language in three as it is with the red line, excuse me.
And then the pink map, um, it, it basically lays out what our intention is. So we will expect applications similar to Fairfield Place going all the way down to Mill River. And it does not include going to South Benson. So the map is not even accurate for what we're saying we want to have potentially done.
I don't know if anybody, I don't know anybody's ever suggested going down to South Benson.
I think it's in the blue pages, isn't it?
I believe there was a, there was a request that we look, um, to expand some of the Center Design District more walkable design criteria, eastward, whether we go all the way to South Benson, I think that was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I got my, I'm, I'm backwards. I'm sorry. I thought this was suggesting more west. I, I got my, my, uh, my streets mixed up. Yes, I do recall that now.
What?
I mean, listen, you want to take out S illustrated in figure 12, fine. I mean, I, in the figure itself, I think it's illustrative only, but I don't.
The illustration is A, not accurate for what we're saying we want to do, and B, it lays out this in a very graphic way, and I think that's even more likely.
And I think there's something else, it's helpful for illustrative purposes to show kind of if you were to expand it one way, if not both, that it's not obviously going into the residential areas. It's staying on the corridor itself. So I think there's some potential value to it, but if you want to take it out, I mean, I don't think it changes anything.
Well, it's in the residential areas. Yeah.
Or you could simply change the word where it says proposed new C D D area on the, uh, graph, just change it to possible new C D D area. I mean, A is possible.
I mean, if, if you would like me to include, um, consideration of, um, expansion of Center Design Business District in the graphic and show an area going east as well. I think part of the discussion that's come up time and time again has in particular been the former Bob's Plaza. And, you know, how that creates, um, an inhospitable pedestrian environment, um, going eastward. Um, so, you know, that might be something, it, it, or we can take the map out. It's entirely up to you. I think graphics are helpful, but it's, it's, it's up to the commission.
I do tend to agree with Commissioner Brown on the, on the graphic, I, because we have talked about east also. Um, so uh, I wouldn't mind if it's easy enough to do. I wouldn't mind seeing the graphic include some sort of, uh, eastward highlight.
I would agree as well. I think that.
I have.
That's Commissioner.
I have red line up. Sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, you know, one of the points that was made earlier is the fact that it shows that it's strictly the corridor and it's not encroaching on the residential area is a helpful diagram, and I think people will understand it better. So if we're, I would prefer we keep it, and if we keep it, then I think it makes sense based on what Kathy and Tom just said, to show, uh, that eastward expansion rather than remove it.
Um, if you look at the blue page here with the red lines that we just got, I have it up. It does say expansion of this more walkable district east to South Benson Road should be considered also. That's in the same thing where it says consider expanding Center Design District consistent type zone or some other, it does say transition.
You're right. I, I, when I said it earlier, I was thinking more west of where it was. I, I, I was, I had South Benson west for whatever reason. So I'm, I was wrong in that respect. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if the commission wants to expand it eastward as a consideration of what we're doing, again, it's consideration, doesn't have to be done. Um, go one way, both ways, whichever. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. So.
So it does say transition zone, which was my suggestion like, I don't know, last year or whenever we spoke about this section last. Um, is that something that we've agreed on, that we're considering in a transition zone when we expand it or just the same Center Design Business density?
No, we, I mean, that's part of what we were discussing is, is, and part of discussing this and negotiating it and considering all viewpoints was, we want to do something, we want to do something different. Um, it can be the Center Design District or some other transition zone as you suggested, just to be, what's the word, cumulative or all encompassing, but still given the idea that we want to do an expansion of, um, of at least the C D, uh, the Center Design Business District, eastward or westward, and what that entails, if it's the exact same zone or if it's different to some extent. So I mean, I think that was the idea for three, and I, so I mean, I would stick with what we have and just as, uh, and as you and Tom said, just expand the, the darker pink out eastward, um, just to be a little, just to be all, uh, to be, uh, what, uh, conforming to what we've discussed.
And then I would say two, the two other points that I made, which is, I, I think they have to be in this section, maybe not in number three, but, you know, seek funding or seek, you know, traffic, holistic traffic and parking study of the entire downtown and also, um, consider implementing architectural design standards for the transition zone. It should be a little different. And is there anything wrong legally with us having architectural design standards? We have them in other. We have them in other regulations where we should be able to have a regulation saying this is what we want in the transition zone.
That's already in the center design district, which is why I think, um, through consultation with the commission, we had recommended pulling that district, both eth, east and west. Because the, our architectural design standards reside within the center design district regulations and the neighborhood design district regulations, but not in the present design business district. So, um, you know, it, but again, I think relooking at the zoning regulations provides us an opportunity to look at those design guidelines and determine whether or not they need, you know, a refresh with new standards. But they, they presently only apply to the center design business district and the neighborhood design business district.
Thank you for that clarification. So I do agree that we should apply them to the commercial districts because they're pretty freaking ugly now. You know, I mean, can we do that? Is there a problem with that?
I, I think we can do that while we're considering the regulations. I just wouldn't put that here. I mean, we're pretty broad in what we're doing. And I think, I don't, I don't really feel the need to go much more with that, but what does everybody else think?
This is a guidance document and that'll guide us to consider it. It's not mandatory, but it'll, it'll highlight the need to, to do that. I think I've talked to Commissioner Randolph about this. I think he would like that, but I can't speak for him.
Are you suggesting that in number three? Let me ask you that.
No, I would say a separate item. I, I don't want to make it interfere with number three.
Ask them with number three, just so I can put a pin in that one. Is everybody okay with the language? And then the illustration will be expanded eastward to South Benson?
Yes. Yep.
I'm going to assume silence is a scent and I'm just.
Only transition zone. I would not agree with it consistent with center design. I would only want it to be a transition zone, but.
All right. I think there's a consensus with, with the languages. Uh, and it allows for that consideration as well. All right. Um.
Should we go to the next section?
What?
Okay. Are we okay to go to the next section?
Well, Kathy brought up something with the architectural stuff. I thought we discussed that. I just, I'm trying. But, um, is it easy, Kathy? It might be easier if we stick with what your, your red lines are and just go through them.
The one I sent separately, let's see.
Yes. But I mean, I think, I mean, I, I thought a lot of this was, I don't, I remember, I thought the gateway, I mean, I just don't recall and maybe somebody can help. Um, I thought a lot of these we went through and maybe it wasn't the gateway stuff, but I thought we did. At least number three, I thought we had gone, gone through this and had a kind of a consensus on this, on most of the other aspects.
We did add the language. You added the language to double, to number three. It doesn't say gateway, says transition. Either way, that's fine. I just wanted it to be only gateway, but we don't have a consensus on that. But then, um, you know, transitioning to downtown.
Asking like number four, number five. I mean, I thought we kind of went through the rest of these and had consensus on them. So that's what I'm asking, Ms. Harrigan. Am I wrong in that? I just don't recall.
We, we did do consensus votes on the, the, uh, principles and goals as, as I've presented them to you today. Based on, um, and so I provided that meeting summary to you as well for the four prior meetings that were held. That you did consensus votes on each of these revisions up to this point.
Even what, in, in what Commissioner Braun had provided with this, uh, housing section.
That's correct. Well, no, because those weren't, those weren't presented prior.
Those were talked about in November of twenty twenty four, and I do not believe we had a consensus. And I think we kind of left it open, but it's not complicated. Like it's really very basic. What I'm saying is, um, consider the gateway or transition district. Do, do a holistic parking and traffic study wherever you are going to change something to add more density and, and consider architectural design standards. And then in item four, where it says, you know, turn, changing from A to B or C, B to C, adding density C. I just changed the language a little bit saying, instead of saying right there next to metro center, like that whole grassmere area. Just consider areas in town where rezoning from A to B or B to C would be appropriate to encourage more middle housing after studying potential impact on traffic congestion, safety, parking and property values. That's how I wanted to reword that section number four, instead of like identifying this neighborhood and saying pretty much it should be done as opposed to doing some research first. So those are the two major changes I had to this whole section.
I mean, I think the reason we, there was, there was identified in that area is because, you know, it was just considered kind of potentially low hanging fruit or, um, something along those lines. I mean, I don't mind the general idea that it's everywhere. If you want to make that consideration. Again, this is where I'm having the study, the, after studying the impact on traffic and this and that. I, I just don't like the, that, that being sounded like a precondition.
Well, what I guess what I'm saying is I don't think we should be targeting one neighborhood to change the A's to B's and B's to C's and adding the density to C's because there could be other areas where it's appropriate and might not be appropriate in, you know, that grassmere area. I mean, we keep hearing from the education people that it's killing our, our s- school facility situation. Our population is growing too fast there. And you know, um, the redistricting will be needed. So I mean, why do we have to put that specific in our P O C? That will drive applications and then this will be a criteria for those applications. So I'd rather keep it a little more general on, there might be many areas in town. And this also might factor into the regulation we just passed, uh, for, uh, middle housing. You know, the, um, the D R D regulation. I'm not sure if, if it would or wouldn't, but, uh, you know. I, I just don't think we should target one neighbor and say this is low hanging fruit. The whole town might have low hanging fruit in different places where it might be appropriate, but we got to study it first that, you know.
Thoughts?
What is the, what is the downside of including that?
I don't mind, I don't, I think the after the study and potential impact, I would take out because I, I don't like that precondition language. That's my only suggestion.
How about like maybe, maybe softer language like consider or?
Well, it's already consider, at least number four.
Well, then, I'm sorry, it's not in front of me. Um.
Just says, I mean.
Instead of that as, as a precondition, just say, consider, you know, uh, uh, seek s- studies of areas in town, um, where we could add middle housing. But you know, you, you have to do those, that research first. You, you know, that's how you find out where it's appropriate.
Um, I, I do think that, you know, one of the things that we should not ignore is that the affordable housing plan is required to be updated every five years. And so the analysis of housing, um, is, is going to be done by the town every five years with the eight thirty J requirement with the affordable housing plan. Um, I will tell you that in our public outreach, people were fairly consistent in wanting to leave single family residential neighborhoods alone. So some of these areas that we have targeted for quote unquote upzoning are transitional areas that are really close to our commercial corridor. Or they are B zoned areas that are already light, light density areas that allow for duplexes. That because of their age, at the age of the neighborhood, there are already a lot of preexisting nonconformities that frankly are higher density than what even our current zoning allows. So you might find a lot of three families where only two families are permitted. Um, so these were very specifically focused areas where, uh, we thought that we could look to revise and do a study, um, to, to figure out whether that's appropriate in those very specific, um, limited areas because frankly, we were told by the general public to leave single family neighborhoods otherwise alone.
So a study is needed. Like I'm thinking of a lot of areas in grassmere, i- it could probably be upgraded. I talked to Commissioner Delgado about this, um, recently. The whole Tunksis area, grassmere, there, there's areas where it can be done, but I do think you have to do a study to make sure you're not making traffic and parking worse.
I think in that area, because I, I live, uh, in one of the proposed areas where we do upzoning. Like I don't think a study is needed. There's, as, as Commissioner Harrigan, I mean, Commissioner Director Harrigan just mentioned. There's a ton of preexisting nonconforming. I mean, my entire neighborhood, my house is not conforming currently. So, you know, I, I don't, I understand in other places, it might be helpful to do that. Um, but I don't, you know, as, uh, Commissioner Lunin was saying, it's, it's having anything feel like a precondition is necessary. I think it limits us. Not to mention the fact that passing this doesn't change the regulations or stuff to go through that entire process. I, I do like the idea of opening up opportunities in a way that in, um, that's number.
Is it possible to share the screen again? Sorry. I just want to be able to see this.
Does that encompass that area, uh, Commissioner Delgado? Uh, does the, the metro center expansion of the A? Does that encompass the grassmere area right there? I, it's hard to tell. There's no street name, number, names on this, uh, figure fourteen.
Figure thirteen, but figure fourteen, yeah.
Fourteen, fourteen and yeah. Does that encompass what you're talking about, Commissioner Delgado? I can't tell by looking at this. It looks like it might.
Yeah, there's, there's a ton of, uh, nonconforming structures in those areas.
So, so this upper area is kind of the New England Avenue streets. And this area here is Kenwood that progresses down. This is more grassmere over here.
Sorry. Yeah.
I mean, thank you, Ms. Harrigan. The reminder was helpful on four and five. I remember discussing that now as to why we were specifically targeting areas. Um, and if you look at number five and it says undertake missing, study to miss, identify missing middle housing types. But I think it might, maybe wrong opinion, but my opinion probably encourages going from A, you know, looking into whether you, we want to move from A to B or B to C and things like that. So then with Ms. Harrigan's reminder, I would keep maybe four and five. And, uh, well, yeah, in four and five, as they are, because they were identified specifically because of what was discussed. And then in number six, if you want to add, I'm not sure what the access in all residential districts really means. But I think at least number six hits on what Commissioner Braun is saying is studying this, missing housing, uh, in other areas, which is going from B to C, A to C, uh, A to B, B to C and all that kind of stuff. So I mean, I think, I think we're pretty clear in the P O C D. We want to consider middle housing and gentle density throughout the town, I thought. Where it's possible, but Ms. Harrigan is right. That's, that was, you know, protecting single families was a concern from the popular, uh, from the, uh, from the people. So I would keep four and five as they are, just because I think, like I said, it targets a specific area for a specific reason. And I think we have enough in number five, uh, what is now number six to address the idea that, uh, Commissioner Braun is suggesting. And I think, like I said, it's elsewhere as well. I'm just happy to talk more, but I just see the time and I just don't want to lose, lose more of it. So.
I'm, I'll make it brief. I, I think I, I'm agreement. I'm fine with them staying as they are. I think my only point would be that I look at four and five as, um, the potential for upzoning. Right? Current regulations applying them to different parcels. Whereas I look at six as saying, what are we doing within the zones and what's allowed? And so what I, what I feel like I was hearing from Commissioner Braun was that, um, we should also be looking at upzoning opportunities within the town. And I think if we're seeing that, then that's like an additional point to add to say four or five, where we're saying, uh, we would like to consider rezoning opportunities. Say throughout the town, such as an example, like what's being identified in figure thirteen or figure fourteen. That was my interpretation, but like I said, I'm totally fine with them staying as they are.
Isn't A zone, single family and B is up to duplexes and C is up to quadplexes right now?
That's correct.
So we are already in this changing from single family to, to duplexes, like saying change from A to B. I don't know where A is on these maps here.
It's the area that's just south of the post road.
I think the difference in allowing something like duplexes in an A zone versus a B zone is more than likely the lot size. That's going to change drastically, right? So the, the possibility of it actually happening varies depending on what requirement these zones going to have.
But we are talking about converting from single family to duplexes. When we can say in item number four, consider rezoning the areas identified in figure thirteen on page twenty-three from A to B. So that does change from single family to duplexes. And that's in the beach area?
This is an area of residential A that is sandwiched between, um, design commercial district to the north and residential B to the south. Normally, uh, when you have transitional zoning, you go from a commercial district to a light density, then to extensively single family. And here we have the opposite where we have an odd, single family, uh, single family exclusive zone right next to a commercial zone, then adjacent to a duplex zone. So this was one where it was going to permit for a duplex zone all the way up to, um, the southern part. This is actually sure, adjacent to Sherman Street. Um, so it was just an odd pocket that was left single family when everything south of it is already single family or duplex.
Is this the one that's number thirteen, Nichols Street? I can't, I can't, I, I'm trying to figure out where that neighborhood is. Um.
It's south of Sherman Street.
All right. Just because I want to get, to keep this moving. Um, keep it the same, not keep it the same. People are on mute if they're talking. Double check if.
I'm sticking with my points that I made.
Okay. Um. Yeah. Um, as a practical matter, Fox Street used to be all duplexes and, uh, that's all been turned into single families. So there was one duplex built. Um, but it would be better if we could encourage more duplexes in that area.
Yeah, I live on a street where a lot of our houses are duplexes, living in a duplex. It's great, um, for a lot of different reasons for different people. I, I mean, I personally would like to see more duplexes too. And I, you know, Vermont has adopted, I think reform a few years ago where they actually have as a right duplexes. Um, I'm not, I don't think we can do it here, but I think it's just something to think about because I think it does meet the needs of what a lot of people need now in Fairfield. Anyway, um, that's another discussion for another time, but I, I hear what you're seeing, saying, Commissioner Levy. Sorry. And I appreciate what Commissioner Delgado said too. I appreciate his insights. So thank you.
All right. So I, again, are we keeping four and five the same? Or not? Commissioner Braun is, I, I, I obviously know.
Sitting with the points I made. I think we should do.
I understand. Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying. I know, I, I know your silence doesn't mean a cent in this case. I know that. What I'm trying to get from everybody else is what, what are their thoughts?
Yeah, I would keep it as is. I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze.
All right. Delgado as is. Who else? Anybody else? Leaving, Levy.
Tom as is.
Okay.
Joe as is.
All right.
As is.
Thank you. Which is fine. Thank you. I just want to keep moving. Um. I, for your number seven, Commissioner Braun, I don't mind adding more mixed use conversion. I thought, I think that's fine, right? I mean, that's potentially what's, what happened anyways. I think that was the idea. You just pointed it out. So I think that's a fair one, right? Go ahead, Tom.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You agree. I assume that's a pretty easy one for people to agree on, right? In her, in what was sent from her, her red line edit, which is it, it should be number seven, cross out, consider new zoning standards, uh, or mixed uses her addition. I think that's a good one.
Number seven of which strategy, uh?
Yours, A.
Must be like further down. Okay.
All right. So that one's easy. Um.
These are. Oh, it's seven, but I have a cross out. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. That's, that's why I'm trying my best. Crossed out number seven under strategy A, you added or mixed use conversion.
Commissioner Harrison, it's the first page in the document that Commissioner Braun had sent, but it's the last, the very last item on that first page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
It's inserting the word or mixed use convert into conversion. Yeah.
So moving to her next part, which is page three of her PDF. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I thought we discussed this enough with, um, the, the transit oriented development stuff. I, I mean, I, I, I thought we discussed this enough with, um, the, the transit oriented development stuff. I, I would I don't want to go, I, I don't want to go through them individually because unless everybody wants to. Um, I would keep everything as is. I think we've discussed this enough. Well, we've already done it with our regulation. Didn't we already increase it to fifty-two feet? So it's almost a move point right now. I crossed out the whole section, strategy C about establishing maximum height, four stories, fifty-two feet, et cetera. We've already done that. That's done. And what do we put for affordable? Do we make twenty percent for the center district or not fifteen? I don't remember. We, because that's in here also.
I think right now it's twenty.
I don't remember what we did. I think it might be. Right now it's twenty. I, I, I'm not sure if we all thought fifty, um, because they went generous with their twenty. Um, I think that threw us off a bit, but, um. I, I mean, Miss Harrigan, any thoughts? I mean, I would, I don't, we may have included, uh, did all most. But I would still, I mean, I think having it in here is thoughts on that, Miss Harrigan?
Just, just based on trying to get the, the plan, um, completed, uh, when we get to the zoning regulation amendments, I know that the fifteen or twenty percent has come up repeatedly in discussion with the commission. So when we get to the zoning regulation revisions, it should be something that the commission spends a little bit more time on to decide whether they introduce a range, whether they have it at fifteen but up to twenty percent and you provide additional incentives. I think um, at least my private conversations with developers, um, the twenty, meeting the twenty percent is a little challenging unless you provide some level of, um, development incentive as part of that, so. Um, but that, you know, that could be something when we do our zoning regulation revisions where you invite developers to come and talk about this and to understand better the, you know, how they have to make the performas work and um, all of that. So that could be part of, um, you know, the zoning regulation discussion for sure.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and I think Westport, they have twenty percent, right? And I think it'd be interesting to see what they do to incentivize that.
Okay. And I would keep it as, I mean, I think we have the thought that some, most all, I don't know, but because I don't recall off the top of my head. I would leave it though. I think we, we've discussed this in the past about leaving it and we've had this in for a while, so. Can we clarify? The blue pages I'm looking at still say twelve percent. And are we talking about page, um, right above figure fifteen, um, page twenty-four? Is that what we're talking about?
Oh, correct. I'm sorry. That's twelve percent. The other, the other section was fifteen to twenty.
But this is townwide, right? The, the six point um, or, or a strategy three, just the minimum inclusionary zoning requirement. That's not specifically in the, uh, center design district, correct?
I think that's in the T O D consistent with our T O D study.
Yes. Town wide, now I don't know about town, town wide is still ten, I think. It's the center design district, right, that we bumped up to twenty.
Right.
Yeah.
But strategy C, um, number, I don't know, C six, it's sort of, uh, still has just the minimum. This is town, it's town wide.
I'm sorry, let me focus on one through four. I would leave those as is. That's my, I'm sorry, let me be more specific. Strategy C. I didn't have anything in strategy B, I thought. Transit areas, right? But that. You did have additions in B. Is that your red lines or hers? I'm just looking at the blue ones. I'm ignoring mine for now, but the, the blue pages. Focusing on yours because that's what I thought you wanted to go through. Well, yeah. We can't have the town wide in this because that, we're talking about the T O D strategy here. I mean, I think right now it's twelve because we've left it there. I, I mean, somebody thinks otherwise, I wouldn't. And I frankly, I'm looking at this, I wouldn't change strategy C. Uh, language anywhere, I don't see. In the blue pages for so, and if you look at the blue pages, that's updated from what I, I would the blue pages have strategy C, which is transit areas, but that includes downtown, doesn't it? It doesn't say metro, it just says transit areas.
It references the map? Because it focuses on the Fairfield Transit Oriented Development Study that was completed in two thousand nineteen that specifically focused, focused on the Fairfield Black Rock area.
Well, that's. So you're saying this strategy C is limited to metro center area, not downtown transit area?
Well, strategy, to, to be honest, strategy one and two, it does speak to the center design business district, but a- as you indicated, most of those regulation changes have already been adopted with the, with, with the one caveat that there was a twenty percent uh, affordability requirement that went with that. But I think the commission is going to probably look at maybe revising that down or allowing the twenty percent, but with additional incentive language. Because twenty percent as we've, as, at least as, as what we've heard is a little bit challenging for developers to achieve without some level of incentive.
So we just passed a regulation and now we're going to propose a ten-year plan that would challenge the regulation we just passed is basically what you're saying. And I'm also looking at floor area ratio, two point five, that was lower on the one we just passed, right? We did not pass a regulation with two point five floor area ratio, I don't think. I'm looking at it in number two on strategy C. Like, are we changing our P O C D from the regulation we just passed two months ago? It seems like we are, considering not going along with the regulation we just passed.
Well, that regulation is largely in response to the, uh, offer by the developer to have twenty percent, and I think at the time we sort of agreed that we'd relook at that, but it, we weren't gonna uh, do anything to, uh, discourage the twenty percent that they were offering.
So, but we passed it for the whole downtown center dis- district, which now we're considering extending. But again, well, I, I don't remember what the floor area ratio was. I don't believe it was two point five in the regulation. I mean, are we worried about being inconsistent by, we just passed a regulation for the whole center district? Ms. Harrigan, should we be taking out the reference, the C B, C D, B D now that we've kind of got a regulation in there?
Uh, that's, you know, that's, I would say that's a, that's up to the commission if you, if you feel strongly. I mean, I think it it, you know, right now, I, I have to be honest that, you know, that regulation's obviously being challenged. Um, you know, I think that it's, it's, you know, it's, it's up to the commission whether they want to leave the language in because if that language, it gets turned over in court. Um, you know, I guess the commission is making a choice right now as to whether they want that to remain in because it's something that you've talked about previously. Um, or if, if you don't, um, but right now that language is being challenged in court, so if it gets overturned, is this still the direction that the commission would like to head in?
I, I would leave it in. I think there's value, even if we passed every word of this as part of the regulation changes associated with the Sunshine Project. Think there's value in having it in our, modifying it, that in our P O C D. Um, so that it's clear that it's not just, you know, we, at that point, we'll no longer be looking back to the twenty sixteen P O C D to determine if any given application is consistent with the P O C D, we'll be looking at this one. Um, and so I think if this is, these are changes, we think it makes sense to include, I would, uh, leave them in um, as recommendations here.
Well, I guess this is just part of the overlap between when, when this first came out our work on it and then just regular work that happens. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable leaving it in.
How, what is, has we talked to the town attorney about it, like how you know, what we should do because it is being challenged?
Well, until it gets overturned in court, this commission approved those changes. So they stand until they get struck down by a court decision.
Yeah, if they do, okay. Okay, thanks.
So, okay, so just philosophically, we passed a regulation a couple of months ago, doing X, Y, and Z. Now, we're proposing to adopt a plan that is different than that. Doesn't that say we shouldn't have passed that regulation? Isn't that telling the court case, we shouldn't have done that? I, I don't.
It's not different than, than the regulation that you adopted. This, this language within the P O C D informs that regulation.
Even if we adopted this tomorrow and we adopted a regulation completely contradictory of this document, that's not going to mean it's going to get overturned. Well, is, is everything in here identical to what we adopted for that? I mean, we're already saying, we don't want to put twenty percent in here for the center of design business district. We want to put fifteen percent or something, right? That's different than what we adopted two months ago. So we're basically saying, we don't like what we did. Because we want to do a ten-year plan that's less than that, and floor area ratio, I believe, is different also. I, I don't believe it was two point five percent in that regulation. I don't have it in front of me. There might be other changes, I don't know. Fifty-two feet was the same. I, I don't think doing this shows that we're, we didn't like what we did. I think it shows that there's a the delay in working on this versus, you know, when the work came towards us. So I'm not too concerned about that. It shows that we want to get as wanted, just but especially when it conforms to most of what we did, if not all of it, so. Again, I believe it as is. I heard, um, anybody else?
I think the cases and the courts have said that this is advisory and aspirational and it's not legally binding. So, um, I think it's fine as it is.
Except everybody relied on this draft when they, sorry, I'm interrupting, yeah.
Are we okay to move on to the next section? I'm just mindful of the time and we noticed the meeting till.
Oh, I know, that's why I am too, and I, I, I think, I, I see.
I mean, we can continue this conversation, right?
It's up to us, but I mean, I was, my thought was that this should really be the last one. Because I don't know what else. I mean, we're, we're kind of going over ground we've done already and we could keep doing this forever, and I thought we had said that we wanted to do this, you know, so that we had a draft ready for public hearing for September. So that's, you know, it's kind of why I want to retread old ground, so to speak, but if that's what we want to do, so be it. I, I just it, it, let me ask you this, Commissioner Braun, because I do want to get to the other, the other things in the blue pages. I everything else I'm seeing in the section that you have, I think we've discussed. So unless there's anything major, I would suggest that we stick with the language that we have with the idea that if there's something else you want to put forth at the public hearing or executive session, do it, we can do it then. Otherwise, we're just going to run out of time today. I'm, I'm trying to find out if in the open space section, I put in my thing about the hundred-foot buffer around tidal wetlands. I, um, that's farther down here, um. Where is that? Um, somewhere about open space, um. That's in, uh. In my document, it's strategy C towards the end. Right above strategy D, the second one up, require fifteen usable space for all projects and preserve a one-hundred-foot buffer, flooding title, air, I mean. So that was not added, so I, I think we have to consider a hundred-foot buffer around tidal wetlands. That's what experts have told us in, uh, hearings. That that's kind of the recommended amount around a tidal wetland, which I'm not saying do it, I'm saying, well, study it, consider it, get an expert. It, it should be in here. It should be highlighted.
Isn't that what the conservation commission does?
No, not title, title, uh, within the coastal management act.
I mean, listen, we just got, we've, you know, we had that with the circle N, D O T, uh, deep. Didn't really, didn't push the hundred foot. I, I mean, I wouldn't I wouldn't put something in like that because, I mean, maybe it's required in some instance for that specific site, but we just approved a site that would deep, uh, did not present that, so I, I wouldn't do that. Well, somewhere in this document, I'm, I, I was talking to Ms. Harrigan earlier today. Somewhere in this document, I would like to have something of a more information exchange, collaboration, communication, seeking input from our environmental experts in town such as conservation, uh, when we take up either planning or regulations or projects that affect our our tidal wetlands. I know we do coastal site planning, but there's no requirement that we seek any information from anybody. And so we usually don't, but so we should, and. We do seek information with people. I mean, that's not, you know, entirely true, I think, because it's coastal, we get D E P. And Well, we don't get it from anyone local. Asked us to, you've asked us to ask our inland wetlands agency about things that are outside their jurisdiction. I, I don't, you know, I think we've asked a few times and you know, they just say it's not outside our jurisdiction. I mean, you can't force people to give us information, even if they probably have it, especially if it's outside their jurisdiction. So I mean. Okay, to clarify, it's, uh, conservation wears two hats. When it wears its inland wetlands hats, it's confined to inland wetlands. When it wears this conservation hat, it does marsh restoration. It does the tide gates. It does, it's not regulatory, but they preserve our coastal resources. They're experts. They're the only expert we have in the natural coastal resources. So when I say go to conservation, I don't mean for inland wetlands regulatory. I mean, to get some guidance, advice, the same way we do with the police department, you know, if, you know, if something is safe. They don't have regulatory review over our applications, but they have expert insight and guidance that we can rely on, or we don't have to. That's all I'm saying. I understand that, but I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, we've done that in the past. And the response that we sometimes get is it's outside of our jurisdiction, so. Well, I don't know how we're asking the question. If we're saying, is there any other wetlands, obviously, but we should be saying, you know, you guys are doing a marsh restoration project five feet away. Can you give us some guidance on this project? Maybe that, maybe, I, I'm just saying in this document to highlight to highlight that, instead of saying, require a hundred-foot buffer in this item, number eight or seven, whatever it is in strategy C, maybe just say seek input and guidance from, you know, conservation sustain, you know, whoever has the expertise. That's, and that's part of our practical duties. I, I don't think that's something we need in our visionary statements, but thoughts? Well, it won't be highlighted if we don't have it. That's the thing. There's nothing that says we should consider it. And when we get applications in, they wave the P O C D in the air and say, see, you want this. And you don't, you didn't say you needed us to do that, you know, so I, I think for us to elevate, I mean, look, we're starting to get D E P letters now that are finally coming back and saying pushback against putting, you know, putting people in harm's way down in the coastal areas. They, they, we used to do it and then they stopped for a few years and now they're saying it again. They did on Reef Road. They're saying, you know, be very cautious before you start putting a lot of people down where the inundation is going to happen. So it's going to get worse and I think we should highlight it. I mean, I, like I said, I'm comfortable. I, I don't, I would keep things, you know, with the, without the hundred foot. I don't think we need that. I don't think we need something that says we should be, we need to go to our agencies. We do that anyways. But that's just my thought.
If, if I could make a suggestion, um, you know, within the, within the beach district, um, you, you do have the power and authority to revise your zoning regulations. Um, your zoning regulations can be more specific to coastal environments and protection of coastal resources. That is certainly something that you can look at and consider when we get to the zoning regulations. Um, the P O C D doesn't, you know, it doesn't have regulatory teeth or authority. You have to do that within your zoning regulations. So that is certainly an option to do when we get there. Um, I know that, for example, even from our zoning enforcement staff, we've had so many people want to put an in-ground pool on this, on Long Island Sound, like in the sand. And we've had to tell them, no, that's not a great idea. Please don't do that. It's, it's hard to meet the velocity standards, for example, but that is something that we're going to put into this zone, like I can't wait to get to the zoning regulation revisions because I really want that in there, so people will stop asking about pools in the sand on Long Island Sound, uh, for example. So I, I think, you know, we really have to get to the zoning regs in order to really have things that have, um, enforcement capability.
I, I agree with that, except we're putting a lot of things in here which are directing us to, to pass regulate, not directing us, but encouraging us to pass those regulations which will then lead to applicants saying, here, here's a regulation. not directing us, but encouraging us to pass those regulations, which will then lead to applicants saying, here, here's a regulation that's carrying out your intent in the P O C D. Why can't we have a similar thing with this? Consider passing regulations to expand coastal resource protection. We can go beyond with coastal site, coastal site plan review, it doesn't have specific anything. We, we do what we want, and we're the regulatory authority. So why can't we have something here to, to study it, to consider it, to seek guidance?
So you want to, so can I just ask the question? Do you want to put this in an environmentally rooted community recommendations under Strategy C, Protect Beaches and Coastal Resources? Is that where you'd like it? So you want like a seven that says, during the zoning regulation revision process, review potential regulations that ensure enhanced compliance of coastal resources?
Not compliance, we do our own program, which could go beyond compliance. We have our own unique situation here.
But that's something where, you know.
We have to comply, yeah, we will be on compliance.
Understandable, but if, for example, right now, and I'm just going to give you an example. If right now, on coastal parcels, we only have a 40 foot rear yard setback adjacent to a coastal resource, or the property line that's defined adjacent to that coastal resource, and you want to include it to 75 feet when there is a, an identified coastal resource of whatever, then you could add that to your zoning regulations. So I'm happy to add something that points us in the direction of doing that work when we get to our zoning regulations, but I don't think we should discuss exactly what that means today.
So you're saying we could add it to the P O C D to highlight the need to consider expanding our zoning regulations?
Yes, we can, so, but I would recommend, so you're, we add it to the environmentally rooted community recommendations under Strategy C, which is to protect beaches and coastal resources? I think that's an appropriate place to add a number seven. Right now, we have six items within that section. We can add a number seven that says, consider zoning regulation revisions that further enhance protection of coastal resources.
This is not subsumed within coastal site plan review, I don't have it in front of me. This would not be subsumed within coastal site program, CAM program?
Well, there was just a state law passed that every single permit that's issued within the coastal area management has to now be referred to D E P. I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't know what that's going to mean, whether it's swimming pools, fences, et cetera. But right now, we have to, we're going to, as of October 1st, we're going to have to refer everything up to the state of Connecticut.
Okay, and so, but what you're saying, what you said before that was, if we could have something in here about expanding our regulations to better protect or expand our protection of coastal resources, is that within the section about following Coastal Management Act? Because it should be separate in addition to that. Because we already have to follow CAM. This would be our elevating what we do to consider passing.
Adding a section that says, you're going to look at the zoning regulations to further enhance protections of coastal resources.
I think that's good.
And that can be defined however you want to do it, but I don't know that we need to get into the weeds of that today.
Well, that should be in the P O C D, but in the other section you were saying, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when we get to that section, we'll talk about it.
Well, let's, I mean, we can get to that section, but is everybody okay with that idea? Like, again, it's just a consideration, I'm fine with that.
I agree with it.
Tom, Alexis?
I'm fine with that.
By me.
All right, all right, can we move on from Section A, please? From the housing, I'm sorry, the housing section?
Can we, can we move on to the next section for?
In the blue page, now going back to the blue pages, is that okay, or do we?
Yep.
I think we're done with what, anything else, Kathy, let me ask you that, because we keep going, we're running out of time, so I would.
I don't want to beat up the whole day, but yeah, I had other things in there, I don't know if they're added or not.
Well, let's go through the, what we have, the next section, sustainably prosperous community.
So I added a subheader here, policies to support, to support sustainable economic development in Fairfield. There was the request that we encourage, I think this speaks to, I think, your earlier suggestion, Commissioner Braun, for adding the Neighborhood Design District as well to, or I'm sorry, I think it was Commissioner Levy who made the suggestion that we also look to allow for more mixed use within that district. I'm sorry.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this? But everybody, just take a look at the section, kind of read it to yourself, the red lines is what the edits are. You don't need to, I think, read what's there. I remember this stuff, I think, and there's the conduct park and study. A shared opportunity, though, and it's the commercial district. Any issues with what's there in this section?
Is sustainably prosperous, I still have a problem with the heading, I don't know what it means. Is it about housing, is it about commercial development? We have a subheading now, economic development.
What you asked for, and then the strategies themselves, and the recommendations themselves.
And can I ask an unrelated question? Because I know we're not going through the detail, but I still really, really.
I would hold off on that, just so we can keep moving.
Okay.
It's unrelated.
Well, it's kind of related, because we're not going to talk about it, but we have to talk about it. It's, we should not make admissions that we don't have enough of anything. We should not make admissions anywhere in the document that could be used against us. When we, and some of the data that it relies on is outdated. You know, half of the people are housing poor, whatever, housing burden, like, that data is old. And we shouldn't be putting it in here, it's not necessary. So I don't know when we can just talk about that, but I cannot agree with language that makes us look worse than we are, especially if it's not supported by current data. And so randomly throughout the document, we have those things in there.
Yeah.
I mean, Commissioner Braun, I think I've been saying for better part of a year, certainly plus, I mean, if you had edits, send them to us. I mean, I, we were always focused, we were always, you, you, you've pointed out, like you pointed out today.
No, I showed you specific pages last time. So we were only talking about the blue pages, we only ever talk about the blue pages.
And I said, if there's any other edits that you had outside of that, to send them in, but I, I don't remember seeing them, maybe I missed them, but. I don't.
Well, we've never talked about the detail, we've only talked about the blue pages, so.
And I've said, though, as I'll repeat myself, that if you had any other edits on the narrative, that that should be submitted.
Well, does anyone in this commission believe we should make statements like that? That half the people in our town are housing cost burden without data, current data backing it up? And just making it look like more of a crisis than it might be? Because that will be relied on by every applicant coming before us, and it might not be true.
Do you want me to provide citations? I mean, it's, you know, it's.
I don't think it should be at all. I don't think the language should be, it's not necessary. I don't know.
There are citations, yeah, I mean, maybe we should be citing, citing stuff, and I thought.
I think we should use this document to beat ourselves up, you know?
I, I don't think so either, and I think if we're going to do that, then why don't we point to the good work that we have done? It goes two ways. We, we did include that in the, within the housing section as well, the, the changes that we've made locally to support additional mixed use opportunities. You know, the work, I think, that has been informed by the Affordable Housing Committee in terms of promoting, you know, additional, you know, housing opportunities. So I think that that language is in there, if you, if you go back and you read that section. But, you know, I, I do think that we took some of the language that was also within the Affordable Housing Plan to inform the P O C D, so we're not just drawing it from, from nowhere, from, you know, we are drawing it from, you know, and kind of being consistent with our Affordable Housing Plan.
But the Affordable Housing, so we don't kowtow to the Affordable Housing Committee, do we? Do we have to do what they have in our document?
Well, I mean.
Because they're doing it every five years.
Well, I mean, I think it's part of the.
To do a very deep dive in terms of, you know, diversifying housing stock, I mean, that is their, you know, that is, they are concerned about people being able to stay within Fairfield, who have, you know, lived there their, their whole lives, and also, you know, having families that can come back to Fairfield if, you know, they go work somewhere else and want to come back to the community that they grew up in, so. And also making sure that seniors have options, that they can also stay within the community. So I, I don't know that the Affordable Housing Committee should be maligned in terms of what their mission and their goal is, and that we shouldn't, you know, accept some of the work that we've done collaboratively with them in this document.
I'm not maligning anybody, please don't put words in my mouth. I said, do we have to make this P O C D comply and follow the Affordable Housing Committee Plan, which gets updated every five years, this gets updated every 10 years?
I don't think there's any.
Would want you as a community.
Yeah, there's no dispute that there's many people, a substantial number, are housing burdened, and that's why we, which is the basis for our wanting more affordable and more mixed use and more diverse opportunities. I mean, half this commission probably couldn't afford to move into this town, myself included, right now, so.
I just remember.
The reality is, I can't afford to live in a lot of places either. That's just, I can't live in Greenwich on the beachfront, I can't live in the Hamptons.
I saw a mansion in Greenwich, I really felt I should live, no, but no, like, this document is not an affordable housing document. This document is a 10 year plan of conservation and development. So I, I don't think we have to blame ourselves and condemn ourselves and say, half the people can't afford to live here. We know we need more, and we're doing it. But I don't think we have to put statements in the document that condemn us. That will be relied on every step of the way going forward, I don't think it's missing.
Well, I guess the question is. But recognizes an existing issue that we're addressing.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's acknowledging an existing issue factually, I mean, I don't think that's a condemnation. I think that's just an acknowledgement of what the current staff.
We haven't asked that, it's only G coming, okay, sorry.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay, it's hard and remote.
We had an applicant lawyer, attorney Hollister, who told us in our new P O C D, which wasn't yet adopted, we're admitting that half the people in our town can't afford to live here. I, I don't know where that number came from, I looked at it, yeah, there's something in our P O C D that says that, this, this draft, which, by the way, our consultant, I just found out, is the same consultant that the state municipal redevelopment authority is using for theirs. Like, they're all about, it's all about housing, it's really not about conservation or anything else, so that concerns me. I don't think we should be.
Why don't you, we have citations to this stuff, I think, right? I mean, I thought, I thought I went through this and saw the, worked with you or somebody, maybe Jim before, about the basis for that stuff. Well, we can, we can, why don't we either put them in there, the citations to it, or at least circulate it?
Yep, I can.
I mean, Connecticut also has very high taxes, we're the third highest tax state in the country. We have high electric rates, I mean, that makes housing, that all bundles into your, your cost of living. Construction is expensive.
Of course, yeah.
Right, three Ls of, 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 of all that, like, the five Ls.
And I don't think acknowledging high taxes and high cost of living maligns anything, I think, or puts anybody down.
But that's part of your cost of living, I would say.
Well, yeah, but it, it just acknowledges a fact. I mean, nobody's, I mean, whether it's in the doc, whether this is in the document or not, and whether it was in the draft or not, they're going to, these are the stand, these are the language that they're going to be using anyways.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I would agree with that.
Yes, I mean, and I don't think acknowledging, you know, the, the, the facts at hand is a problem. So I mean, if there's something specific, I'd like to know, and if I missed it, I'm sorry, but I don't think I did, so. This is kind of like.
We've, yeah, we've passed three regulations in the last six months, which will add significantly to our housing and our affordable housing. We passed one for downtown that went along with Fairfield Place, we passed the, they call it middle housing one, the condo one, that will affect every property in, you know, every district in town. And we passed the five plexes on, what, 15,000 square feet? So that, is that recognized, have we added that to this document as recognition of progress? We also passed the A D U expansion, and outdoor, we, we passed a lot. Is that being recognized by being added to the P O C D draft? Because it should be. If we're going to talk about how bad we are, we need to talk about how good we are too, that we've done a lot of stuff. Because every, I'm so, every time there's an 830G, and okay, granted, we have a moratorium now, but we still have some pending, like, that's all we hear, you're terrible, 3%, awful, you know, we've, we've done a lot. And we don't do development, but we've done a lot to encourage it, and that should be in here. If we're going to put the negative, we have to put the positive in.
I mean, again, I don't think you, when you, when there's, when they're citing staff to us, two and a half, 3% or whatever it is, it's not saying we're bad. I don't know where you, you jump from like the fact to where we are with, you know, a personal slight on the town, and I don't think that's, you know.
No, it's how it comes out, it's how it comes off.
I, okay, I don't, I don't, I don't get that, but that's okay.
Well, we should at least mention, though, that we've passed regulations to expand our housing options. I don't know if that's in there.
This is a visionary document too, I mean, I don't know, I mean, is there, I mean, is, if there's an opportunity for that, Ms. Harrigan, I guess that's fine. But I mean, I don't think we've put in there in the last, since 2016, everything that we've done.
But these are major.
Since 2016, so.
These are major things that will change our town, that we've done recently.
If it's, if it's the direction of the commission, I'm happy to include it in. I think you should just.
Is there anything wrong?
The direction of the commission.
Ms. Harrigan, is there anything?
Where would you put it in, hold on, where would you put it in?
So there is presently within the, I, I thought we had moved on to the other section, but there's presently within the narrative section for housing, we do include some, you know, some, some things that we've been able to achieve in terms of housing stock expansion. So I, I'm happy to include those regulatory changes.
That's fine, we should update, let's update that, and then what the, with the additional, I mean, is everybody okay with that? Updating those things and then noting what we've done recently, I think that's.
There's no reason not to do it, right? I see no reason we wouldn't say that, right? No downside to saying what we've accomplished. Even though I was against it, we did accomplish it.
I, in the interest of time and the fact that we've only noticed this meeting till 1:30, we either have to make a motion to extend the meeting, or hold another meeting to do this. I would just like to point out to the commission, that I only have, we have to finish whatever additional work we do 35 days with enough time to revise the document, and then have this document posted for 35 days before your scheduled hearing on September 9th. So that means some work with the consultant, as well as work here. So there has to be a stopping point at reviewing this document.
Can we move?
So we can get ready for the next public hearing.
Can we move this public hearing to the 15th or the 20th of September? I mean, there's still plenty of time before the election.
I don't, I'm not inclined for that. I, I think, my thought would be this, and this is kind of what we've discussed in, throughout this whole year, was to get to this point, to have a draft by July 1st, which I, I know I, it was a miscommunication in June. You know, we got this meeting now to July 10th. I, I think, considering where we are, unless I, I mean, I'm happy to extend it for an extra 10, 15 minutes today, if anybody wants to talk about anything major. But to me, this is everything that we've discussed, and if anything else that needs to be discussed can be done after a public hearing. That's my opinion.
I'd like to, I appreciate that. I have to, Ron, because I have to go back to my day job, I'm sure others do too, but can we, I would like to discuss the education section, which I worked on with Ms. Harrigan. I'm happy to meet early next week, lunch hour is fine, I just can't do any more today, unfortunately.
I, I'm away next week. So I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, what was it, can we extend it for 10 minutes to talk about that?
I'd like to talk about the history section as well.
Well, I, we've, I remember talking about the history section a long time ago about that, and I know you did it anyways. I don't know if anybody.
I think the education section, it probably speaks for itself. Maybe we don't have to go over it.
When you worked with Commissioner Harrison, were those, were those edits put into this?
Sorry, there's very lot of equipment here. I just want to point out that if you go to the interconnected community recommendation, or sorry, the community where people come together recommendations, there's a whole new Strategy A that speaks to education. If you have not reviewed that portion of the blue pages, and that's specifically Commissioner Harrison in response to the conversation that we had. So please let me know whether that section, you know, I, I added that section in relationship to comments received by the Board of Ed, as well as our conversation together. So let me know if that's okay, or if you want to make further revisions that then we can provide to the commission.
Okay, I'll, I haven't had a. Okay, I'll I haven't had a chance to look through it. I can do that today or tonight. Sorry, I just.
Does that include that whole thing that you that Commissioner Harrison wrote? It looked like it was like two pages long.
We were focusing on the strategies and the goals within the blue pages. So there will there will be probably a little bit of narrative that gets added to. That narrative section to reflect the policies and goals that are added in the blue pages.
The conversation I had with Ms. Harrigan is that we that, you know, we want the P O C D to appear that it's speaking with one voice. And not fragmented, you know, disparate voices. So I think I understood you were taking kind of what I put together and putting it maybe in. That one voice that we we have right now. I I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'm.
Do you want me to bring that up really, really, really quickly?
Yeah, 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 sure. Thanks.
Okay.
That's page 51.
Yeah, it's 10 of 14 on that PDF.
Wait.
Oops.
Are we talking about the blue pages or the narrative section?
Blue pages.
This looks a lot shorter than what that letter was, Attorney Harrison, that Commissioner Harrison put together. I mean, that was like a two pager. But if you have strategies in the blue section, shouldn't they be supported by detail in the narrative?
Yes, I I understand that, and. So I would just request that we focus on those policies first, and then we'll backfill a little bit of narrative, but I I can't integrate. I have different folks giving me 10 pages here, five pages here, and I and I don't want to Frankenstein the document. So I'm trying to take their salient points that were discussed and integrate that within the narrative of the plan. But almost as a transition to when you update your zoning regulations or you're giving yourselves action items to perform in the next 10 years. The 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 most salient points of the document are within those blue pages. The this is your to do list. And so I'm trying to really incorporate. The the items that were expressed to me as being the most critical. Within the blue pages so that we know that those are action items moving forward.
So philosophically, or just as somebody who writes a lot of documents for a living, it's very odd to have. A conclusionary summary task list that is not supported by detail. I've seen it and it's all over this. The blue pages do not draw always from the narrative. They just show up with no backup. To me, that's a problem.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but. Again. I would, in this. We could be discussing this for a long time, this draft. I would recommend that we do what I outlined. That if there's anything else that needs to be adjusted, or we, based on our conversations, we have staff. Put together the draft for our public hearing in September. And knowing that if there's any other edits that can be had, which we can do still, we do that in our executive session.
So. We're going to have another executive session because we didn't talk about, I don't do not recall talking about the history section that I submitted a few months ago. I don't think we ever.
We talked about the history section having one way back when, and then you put one together. So we have not talked about it specifically, but we've talked about it before and generally.
Well, it's here. I we have it, and it's doesn't have to be that long, but. Yeah, and were we done with with education now, or?
I I believe it was a consensus vote by the board to not include an extensive history session section within the P O C D. There was a consensus vote that was taken.
So has anything from what I submitted to you a few months ago been added to this red line document just now?
No, because, well, the only thing that was added was. Within.
And is this red line document available to the public or just to us by email?
No, it's posted on the website.
Okay, so this new red line just came out like a couple of days ago, and it has only the blue pages. With the most recent changes that you called from what we've been talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we did include within the section that speaks to. Maintaining historic districts and legacy neighborhoods. Expanded the number three within strategy B three was expanded. To allow for continued review of. Expanding the current existing historic districts as well as potentially. Reviewing for designation of additional individual properties.
Is this, what section is this interconnected or?
No, a community that is home to all. Because that's the section that discusses historic preservation.
Because I think there were a lot more recommendations in that historic. Document I wrote. Going to find it. See.
I mean, the other thing, though, I thought what we talked about back in March or February was. And I think Commissioner Harrison did this was for you, Commissioner Braun, to make with Commissioner. To Ms. Harrigan to discuss it and call it, which I thought you would. You hadn't done yet, but.
No, we've not done that.
Yeah.
But there's maps in here too, so.
We did it. We did address those things, and the the address was you would work with Commissioner Ms. Harrigan on that. I don't think that happened.
Well, can I? Can I ask Ms. Harrigan now to call something from this and have something on history, even if it's only two paragraphs, maybe not? I have like a. What the thing I drafted is, I don't know, six or seven pages long is kind of detailed, but I.
Nine pages.
I know. But we have this map.
My thought would be this. My thought would be this. This is not our, this is not our last chance. But I think it should be our last chance before the public hearing, because the public needs a draft to look at before the public hearing. So we can do other discussions after the public hearing in our executive session. I I this is. I I don't want to keep pushing these. Planning meetings out every, you know, have one every other week or something like that. And we're rehashing old arg old discussion points. And I know because we didn't, if we didn't get to some, I'm sorry, but I mean. I think we need to. I think this is the end one where we have a draft. That goes to the public hearing, and then anything after that, we can discuss in our executive session.
Can I just ask, since we're all here, can I ask Ms. Harrigan?
Yeah, if I just real quick, Commissioner Braun, I'm sorry. I just. All right, I appreciate all that and agree, but if we do get some input from the public during that public hearing, will we be able to have. Opportunity to to make some additional tweaks or edits?
Of course.
And I'm not looking to prolong this.
No, no, but you may, that's the whole point. I mean, it's just like a regular hearing. You get public comments. On a regulation amendment or this, and you make edits after the fact. And if we need to reopen the public hearing for whatever reason. Because that's how you do it. That's fine, too. I'm I'm not, I'm trying to say that this is not the end of editing process, but we just need to get to the.
I agree, agree.
So, okay, so I talked to Melanie Marks, who's a historian. She gave me these beautiful old maps of Fairfield. I think at least one of them needs to be put in here. Is there any problem with adding a map and do having Ms. Harrigan just pull a nice little summary for my history and sticking it in there? We have nothing really on history now that's in interesting, you know, and we're 400 years in town.
I I don't like the idea of even a nine pager, which I mean, it was it was.
Okay, that's long.
It was fine. It was well written, but I just. You have books on Fairfield history, and I just don't like the idea, and without having looked at everything and researched the matter, is. Taking Fairfield history and putting it into nine pages when I I haven't really fully understood, you know. Everything that goes into it, and then trying to distill it even more to two. I mean, this is a visionary document. And I just think it should be forward thinking, and the history books are there and available.
Yeah, I thought we were pretty clear that we leave that to the Historical Commission, the stor history museum. I mean, the nine pages are well written, but, you know, there are some areas that they gloss over, critical areas that aren't included, and I think we're just. Fighting off more than we should can chew, and it shouldn't be in there at all. So leave that.
I hear you're saying. But in the vision section on the last page of the nine pages. There are more recommendations than simply having our historic commission. We have the need for landmark protection, which, by the way, helps protect you on eight thirty Gs. We should do more than just have our current historic commission do what they do. There's other stuff. We need to get more things registered. State and federal and. Collaborate with the school system and the university. There's more, there's recommendations in the back, which perhaps some of them can be added, but again, like I said before. If you're putting something in a strategy, there should be some backup in the narrative, but so. Maybe you don't have to have a whole section written out, but maybe like a paragraph, and then this add a couple of these things to the strategy. And I don't know if it has to be under the housing section or another section, but it should be in here. We need to preserve this, and it helps us going forward as well.
I mean, I don't, I don't need to keep going in the circle. I just, I mean, I disagree with you in that respect, and. We've said as much previously, and again, if there's anything else that we can, you want added, I think right now it should be discussed after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Ms. Harrigan, I think, is it kind of clear where we need to go now at this point? We need to get a draft ready. Based on what we've discussed. Everything now and previous, we need to post that. For the public hearing. We need to have our public hearing. So is that timeframe going to be okay based on what I what we've done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. If there's an issue with that, let us know. All right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'll adjourn the, I appreciate everybody staying a little later, but I'll I'll adjourn the meeting now.
All right.
Thanks.
Take care.